All right, the next thing on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. And we have a couple of things that we need to revisit this evening. First of all, on item four point oh two, um, number two, I believe it is, or number, number three, um, that needs to be pulled. We're not, we're not prepared to do anything on that this evening. Four point oh two, number three. And then on item twelve point thirteen, uh, that will be moved to, uh, and action item instead of consent, twelve point thirteen, number one, okay? And is there anything else? Before we adopt the agenda, Ms. Donnell has a couple of questions on item twelve. I'm sorry?
Can we pull twelve point fifteen?
For action?
Yeah. Well, you, you're a...
That's a job description.
Yeah. You would, um, pull that for action? Is that what you would do? It's going, it's consent?
That's what she's wanting.
Somebody wanted to pull the creation of those two bus drivers?
Okay, well, we'll pull, we'll pull item twelve point fifteen for action, okay? Anything else?
Yeah, real quick, Danny, it's a question, can I ask now?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Um, quick question with the, um, under twelve point oh five with item number two, far as Chris Bray going, changing her reappointment date. Can you get some information in regards to why we changing her reappointment date superintendent?
I can answer that. Um, that's just with the dates that it should have been on there.
Is there a reason why it should have been there all along? I mean, because we, this has kind of been regular where we bike dating. And I know I've asked questions in the past.
It should have said June twelve. So it's a mistake on, you can say me, but it should have been June twelve. She hasn't been working, and then we realized, oh, gosh, it said July first, or whatever it said. We realized we need to correct that.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it seemed like that's happening a lot with the backdate or whatever. So again, I don't, I'm just not understanding that.
Kind of part of the meeting, like we say, on that Friday, start to, a week before the meeting, we say, this is the last day to turn in in May. So it was just like with summer school, we were trying to get everything on there in May, because summer school started off the day after, um, February. So sometimes things don't happen, and then we have to go back. We try not to add, it causes a lot of stress, and gets even more confusing when I add, you know, pressure to change it. So sometimes those things are being approved later for something that's already happening, because we cannot get it on the agenda.
But that's what I'm saying, like, we, every year, when we do our organization meeting, Kiki, we say, when we're going to have school board members, secretary sends out a calendar, when the last day to get something. I mean, if we're, as a board, have to oblige that, we can't just throw anything. I would think that would be the behavior of the district too. You just can't keep adding stuff or backdating stuff. Because again, it turn, all of this is tied to funding. And so that's just my concern, that if it's happening more than it should, then how is, on the district side, how are you guys are paying attention to the deadline? And pushing this stuff up? Because again, you guys have time to plan and implement what's coming. But again, we get everything all at one time. And if there's no leaning on us and being prepared to come in here, then I don't understand why this stuff can't be a little more, you know, how it needs to be when it's coming up. Because again, if the goal, if you did interviews and if you knew, then again, that's the error that shouldn't have been. So I'm not trying to discipline anybody. But again, I mean, like I say, it's a lot with the changing dates or the backdating, or people starting before they get appointed. That's something we've kind of always done. It seemed like that's a foreign behavior. So again, it needs to be addressed, I would think, if we're looking at trying to do stuff differently. So that was just a concern.
All right. So do we have a motion in second that we, uh, Ms. Carlton makes the motion? Ms. Agner seconds it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye, the approval of minutes for June the seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Mathis makes that motion. Ms. Agner seconds it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. Now it brings us down to the items of interest by the public. And, uh, as you, if we do have some tonight, uh, we just, uh, at this moment in time, we can't discuss, uh, personnel matters, okay? Or specific allegations against a staff member or student. And we can't discuss that in public forum. Uh, it's the responsibility of the superintendent to bring such matters to the board's attention at the appropriate time and place. And we just ask, if you could, please limit your time to three minutes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, good afternoon. My name is Santina Demming, and I'm here tonight as a concerned member of this community. I am deeply troubled by the potential sale of the Rock Building. This is not just about the structure or the dirt that it sits on. It is about the history that lives within it. It is about whether we, as a community, are willing to preserve the irreplaceable or allow it to simply be discarded. I attended the June seventeenth meeting after reading in the local newspaper that the Rock Building was being considered for sale. I left that meeting with questions, confusion, and even more concern about the fate of this property. During that meeting, the building was casually deemed unusable for educational purposes. There was no report provided, no cost analysis, and the only thing mentioned were a few vague figures about what it costs to run. And when a board member asked for a specific cost analysis regarding this property, it was stated that it was available for those who came by the district office. That is not transparency, and that is not how you justify the sale of a community landmark. If you're going to claim that it is too costly to maintain, then show us the facts, please. Let the public and the board see the independent data. Anything less is simply unacceptable. Here's what's even more troubling. At that very same meeting, a report was given about the millions in hurricane damage repairs, repairs that FEMA will apparently not be reimbursing this district. According to the Perry News Herald, hundreds of thousands of dollars have already been spent on repairs to this site. And if it's unusable, why would the district pour funds into it? In return, wouldn't those funds poured into it make it usable once again? The money, that money came directly from the school district, directly from the students in this district, and directly from the people who pay taxes in this community, the same people who elect these, this board to office. So I urge this board to pause and think critically about this. This is not just some building, it is a story of who we are as a community. According to the newspaper, it was built in the nineteen thirties with rock and wood from this very county. It is homemade in that sense, and it has been standing for nearly a hundred years. Generations of students and educators have walked through its halls, and it is a symbol of craftsmanship, resilience, and the values of this county once held dear. We cannot allow it to fall into hands that won't understand or respect its significance. Too many of our historic sites have already disappeared in this county. For example, our beautiful courthouse was demolished, and those at the time also thought that was a great idea. But I bet anytime any of us drives through Monticello or Madison, we wish we had also preserved our beautiful courthouse. And the historic train depot was once on the chopping block, and now the Rock Building. How can we allow this sort of thing to keep happening? Once you vote to sell it, once it's sold, it's gone and we can't get it back. So please, do not be the board remembered for letting a piece of our history slip away. You can preserve this property, and I think you should. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, have someone else, yes, sir?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Donell Gregory. I'm a proud father of the, of my son Cameron Gregor, a Taylor, uh, school high graduate. I'm also the president of the Taylor County FFA alumni and supporters. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'd like to begin by thanking all of you for your supporting career in technical education programs, when many other districts are choosing to cut them out. You are choosing to expand them, and that is appreciated. I want to take a moment to address a critical issue that affects our schools, our students, and the future of agriculture. The unfortunate decision of administration to eliminate the supplement additional duties days currently offered to our agricultural teachers. Our dedicated, dedicated agricultural teachers to correctly teach them programs needed to work additional hours, usually during holidays and summer breaks. That up to the point we were at least partially compensated for. As I hope you are all aware, FFA is not an extracurricular activity. It is an intracurricular activity, uh, part of the quality of ag program as indicated by the Florida Department of Education frameworks, which means an integral part of the school's formal curriculum, essential to students' development and training. Furthermore, the framework includes instructions to require, uh, is required beyond the hundred eighty day school year. Agricultural teachers play a cr, uh, critical role in preparing students for careers in food, fiber, natural sources, and many related fields. Even if, uh, students don't pursue ag careers, they are now informed consumers because of their time in ag class. Unfortunately, there is significant shortage of qualified agricultural science teachers nationwide. Many students struggle to find educator, educators who are both credentialed and passionate about their teaching, this critical, uh, this vital subject. We went through several here in Taylor trying to find the right fit for our school and community. Continuing to fund the twenty extended days funded through, uh, Perkins, a grant meant to support CTE programs, is essential to attracting and retaining qualified teachers who are willing to work through summers and weekends to support student projects, attend state conventions, and other leadership development opportunities such as forestry camp, as well as specific targeted professional development for our teachers, all outside the regular contracted hours. I realize teachers are paid in stepping, which is the FFA activities throughout the school year. They stifle, uh, while gracious falls short of covering the additional duties required for the agricultural teachers beyond the hundred eighty day school year. The teachers can't afford to lose the twenty days extra pay that covers weekends, summer events, and after hour events. Research shows a higher teacher pay leads to better teachers, reduce turnover, and improve student outcome. It also helps attract talented individuals who might otherwise choose careers in the agricultural industry, where salaries are often well above what a teacher, uh, what we pay teachers. Our teachers face competition from a very, uh, from the very industry they are trying to prepare students to enter. Without competitive salaries, schools would struggle to qualify, to keep qualified teachers, which put the qualified agricultural education at risk. Tonight, I urge you to recognize the importance of supporting our ag teachers through the fair compensation there as the backbone of our future agricultural workforce. Please continue to offer the ag teachers the supplement, which has been offered since we opened the ag program here in Taylor. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just got a quick question. We, we getting rid of the ag supplement?
Now, the ag supplement is still there. I think we do extra hours that are funded out of, uh, Perkins.
And I can think about it a little bit. So we're, this first year, we're seven back.
Can you stand up, Shelby? Because it's hard when you replaying and trying to hear.
So Perkins will cut this year, post-secondary. We have more programs to fund out of a very small pie. So you're funding, now you have, on the child education, if not on the same pot, you have ag, you've got promotional enterprise. There's several programs that meet the criteria now to be funding out of the same pot. We're going to, this first year, it won't be a complete slash in days. It'll be, it'll be a, it'll be a gradual step down, um, and decrease. So it won't all be gone away. But this, our financial situation for our Perkins funding right now, because the extra days are funded out of grant funding, it, it will be decreased as of coming here. There will be days for state convention, there will be days for forestry camp though.
So did we just look at this one program? Or did we evaluate all the programs and try to figure out how we could?
This is the only program that could be, um, structured getting bonus, my bonus days.
Okay, all right.
Shelby, do you recall how much is being cut from our ag, that supplemental money for ag? Not supplemental, it is extra hours, okay?
So right now, we're looking at the first day going from twenty days to ten days for the first year. And depending on funding for next year, that's going to play into what's happened and fallen here.
Okay. Thank you.
That's over a half, if you're going from twenty to ten.
And I apologize, I mean, the whole, the whole ag thing, these students go out, I'm with them. I'm seeing what's going on, I'm seeing progressing. Go look at the newspapers. We are, the agricultural program, both in the middle school and the high school, is putting really good publicity for, for the school inside of that. I, I can't tell you how many times you can open up the newspaper and see these young students going through all these programs. I mean, going over to the capital, the, the, the show in Madison, the state convention, forestry camp. I mean, they're going all over the place, becoming leaders in what, what we need. Um, and if you're gonna, if they're gonna cut the, that down, I mean, think about the school districts around us that is doing. I mean, Swanee has got one heck of a program. I, I'm, I just don't want to see Taylor County falling behind when we have got dedicated teachers pushing forward in regards to this. Uh, there's got to be ways that we can figure out how we can help and retain a smut such small pool.
Right.
We lose that pool.
It's across the board, the federal, the federal cuts in Perkins. So we're not the only district that's losing a little bit of Perkins funding. This is, um, per second, post-secondary, secondary, and rural have all been cut to us this year. And it's not just for Taylor County, it's across the state.
Is this something, Jill, that we could probably find some other, like, funding to support? Or does it have to come through Perkins? Like far as grant funding?
It was originally funded through Perkins. So if we added it to our federal grants, which, um, Reggie and I did not get good news today in federal grants, um, we don't have the funds for it, but it'd be supplanted.
Okay. Well, I mean, I don't know what we can do, but I, I, I do know when I looked at this budget and looking at what some other counties got far as the governor, I mean legislative budget, I, I just really think, I know we've talked about appropriations, but I think this might be something we might, could try to address in appropriation request. I don't know. But I, I just think this might be something we could probably, you know, go to our legislator and senator on. I, I don't know how soon it would take effect, but just from what I've seen, you know, because the way we've been looking at the budget and stuff, and seeing what other counties are, they're supplementing through appropriations, that might be a way we could try to address.
Ms. Gregory, thank you for putting this on our radar very much. Um, um, we happen to be the board that, during my time period on here, and all of ours, that brought FFA in, and we're very proud of that program.
Yeah.
We do not want anything to happen to our ag program. We want to see it grow just like you do. So we will, we will.
It has, I mean...
Tremendously.
It has.
And it gives community support, so, yeah.
And in our, in the grants we have, if they're still funded, we have, um, supplies for them, and then we do have money set aside to pay dues and fees for competitions that they attend. That's it, that's the max I can put in.
Right.
But as of today, I don't know if that funding's going to...
Right.
Let me ask this question, Reggie. We have a lot of overtime, and Kiki, we have a lot of overtime. Could this not be considered overtime? What now, for the teacher? We have a lot of overtime for different things in our district. Could this not be considered overtime?
I don't, I don't think it's considered overtime because she's not working beyond her seven and a half. She gets her supplement for extra duties that she does. But when these extra hours are mainly in the summer, so there wouldn't be considered overtime?
Because it's not school year.
Right, it's not beyond seven and a half.
I want to address that it's not just she, it's them. It's both the middle school and the high school.
Right. But...
But the middle school, I don't think gets as much time as the high school would.
But it would still have to be funded from somewhere, even if, you know... Yeah, but I just, I, I didn't want it to violate the summer not being overtime.
Right. Now, she still can go to, there's one big conference, I think that's, she still gets, um, she still gets to go to that, I think it's like a week long, four days, you know what conference? Yeah, she's still going to that. I know that's not using her time with the animals and the kids. But that's for her to learn.
That's a very big conference time in Orlando, the FFA state convention. It's where the, the students go and receive their rewards and everything that they've done.
But that's still...
We just had two teachers receive awards down during that big state convention. We had seven students walk the stage for their FFA state degree, which will have been right here. Um, those are big accomplishments. Uh, I believe that only two percent of the FFA student population gets their state degree.
Yeah.
So only we've had seven this year. And that can't be done without our, our agricultural teachers.
I can also personally testify to the importance of the educational factor of the state convention, because they lead a lot of different leadership workshops, financial management, time management, and community leadership and working as a team. I've learned a lot of different leadership, speaking, financial skills from going to state convention. So it's not just a fundraiser to receive awards, it's not like our FFA banquet at high school and middle school, but it is genuinely an educational opportunity.
Okay.
And I miss for sure that...
Yeah, I think, I think that, uh, I don't believe there's nobody on the board. I didn't know, I weren't aware of some of the issues till the other day, whenever, um, I was asked if they somewhat, if they could, if you could come and speak to the board. There are a lot of programs in our school, but FAA, our, our, our agricultural program is, to me, one of the highlights. And, um, we need to do research. We need to find out what we might can do to address this issue, uh, you know, this issue. Because, um, you'll get only out of something what you put into it. And so, um, I'd, I'd love for, uh, superintendent, if he would, to come back and address this to the board, if you would.
Absolutely. And we do support that program.
Yes.
A hundred percent.
Okay, thank you.
And like Jill said, it's, it's not of our choosing. And unfortunately, there's a lot of things in our county that's happened in the last couple of years that hasn't been of our choosing. But I think we've handled it all really well, and we'll continue to strive, and we'll continue to do what we can on this sub... I was going to say, I, I, I think it wasn't something we could decide on tonight. We should refer it to the superintendent.
Yeah, right. They didn't bring some more information back to us, okay? All right, thank you. Do we have anyone else that'd like to address the board this evening? If not, we'll move forward. Uh, the consent items, uh, were approved by the adoption of the agenda. Uh, and this brings us down to five point oh one.
Okay, I would make a motion, um, I guess for discussion. I have, I have a ultimate, another motion.
All right, motion for discussion. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay.
On this resolution, I am still, as, as a board member, I am in favor of going to a public hearing to get the input from the, the public on what, you know, I mean, we all have a, we all have a vote. But, you know, we also have constituents out there too that, uh, I'm sure has been talking with some of y'all. And, uh, I just, that's, that's what my thought is, and I don't know what the rest of y'all think.
Well, um, I appreciate, I forgot your, what's your first name?
Santina.
I appreciate her coming tonight, and I appreciate, uh, what Brenda's saying. I appreciate what Reggie's thoughts are. We all have our thoughts. But this building doesn't belong to the district. It belongs to the taxpayers. And we need to hear from them. And I think for being in the paper on a Friday and having a meeting on Tuesday is not long enough. And that's just my personal opinion. I don't know legally exactly how all this is supposed to take place. I know Angela will help us with that part. But I do know that we need to be transparent. Um, we need to make sure that if we do decide to sell it, that we know if we move this bunch of kids that are in there now over to another building, really how much savings is that? That, I've asked Reggie for that. So we need to compare apples to apples, not apples and oranges. We need to really know if it is feasible and doable to sell it. If it's something that, and I think, I, something in the back of my mind tells me five, ten years from now, and Taylor County's booming, where are we going to build another school?
And where are we going to get money for another school?
We've got, um, one paw of the land that I know of, I don't know of any other. But, um, you know, this is not something we need to be hasty about. It's something that we need to hear and take our time and do it the right way. And that's my thoughts.
And I, I just want to add, I do agree with Brenda and Bunny's concern. But even my concern far as, before we go to a public hearing, I do just feel like what we've been presented so far has kind of been a little short sighted. I really don't feel like we've really had, um, enough information presented in the matter. Um, I do get the superintendent's concern far as expense. And I'm quite sure, you know, with him being new and hitting the ground running, and that being, you know, a big thing on his shoulder in regards to funding, I, I get, you know, the work that the district has been doing, trying to figure out where we can cut costs and what will have the least impact on our, our staff, our kids, and our community. But at the same time, it seems like a lot that's coming to us is, is just being a little short sighted in regards to some of the, the ways we're looking at cutting back. It just leaves me with the concern is, are we really going to cut back? Or is it just going to create another expense that kind of, you know, actually be even more overhead over the district? So I, I do agree, like she said, that this is, it belongs to the community. We do need to give them the opportunity to weigh input. But if that opportunity is put out there, and then, you know, we don't know what that will, you know, the outcome of that be, it's still, to me, I think we need some more information presented to us before we just make a decision like that. Especially with the, like, what was stated tonight, the amount of money we've put in this building. Um, we've put, you know, over a million dollars in this building. Um, and so we don't have many school buildings. And it's just my concern too, like, in five or ten years down the road, if we had to consolidate buildings, or if we need a new building, and the state is not willing to give us that funding, because we know what happened when we was initially approved for funding with Taylor County Primary. It was kicked down two or three times, and then, and then when we finally got it, it was still not enough. So I don't know. I just feel like we need to do a little more research on the matter and really be strategic about what would be in, in the best interest of the district, so.
All right, Ms. Ball, I know that you have covered this with the board before as far as where what is being asked. There is nothing, um, prohibitive from acting on this tonight, that I understand. But, um, you know, the, being able to gather all information, have all the facts, and have the public well notified for a public hearing. I know that, talking with you about this, that, you know, that is what you would prefer to see happen as our attorney, but it doesn't mean that we have to, right?
It is not required. That was a recommendation early on in the process. Um, we mentioned last time, uh, the issue addressed by the state level facilities, uh, folks that I had reached out to, um, that, you know, they're, they recommend that as well, and that this is a process that you have to go through. Uh, but again, the statute does not require that. That's just a recommendation from the agency, and it sounds like the board, at least some board members have some, uh, appetite for that, so.
So however, if it's the consenses of the board for a public hearing, we may take that step?
Absolutely.
Okay.
One other comment, but when I look at the conditions for the sale, it says the school board has to decide the minimum price. And, and as far as I know, we haven't, we haven't discussed that.
Right, at the point, whether it's tonight or in some, at some future time after a public hearing, when you approve this resolution, uh, it was the recommendation also that you have a minimum bid amount. So you would need to set that and discuss that at the appropriate time.
But in the board, um, setting that, would that be based off of appraisal? Because, I mean, Angela, did, didn't you say at the last meeting that it was advised from Tallahassee that we did have at least one or two appraisals on the property?
Right, when a property is valued in excess of five hundred thousand dollars, the recommendation is one appraisal. When it exceeds, uh, a million, um, then it's two appraisals. Um, so yes, there is a recommendation that there be two appraisals. So yes, there is a recommendation that there be two appraisals by the board, or excuse me, by the administrative agency.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea. And I know it's expensive to get an appraisal. And I've said this to Reggie too. You may have to save $6,000 or $12,000, but you might save yourself $24,000 by doing that. So you, you wouldn't sell your house without an appraisal. Nobody would. You don't, you don't, you know, I know the fair market value, I've got it sitting right here in front of me. It's, it's, it's a million.
That's assessed value, that's not fair market.
Yeah, I'm sorry, excuse me, assessed value. None of us would sell our property based on what the tax collector's office has listed for. So we need to get a true value. And I know it's gonna be hard to do because you don't sell that kind of building every day. And, you know, it's gonna be hard to find somebody that's willing to do it for a good price. That's the reason I asked Lacy to contact Jim Brent Marsh. And I hope he watches and I hope he's listening because he's one of Taylor County's and he does appraisals. And he's a fair, good Christian man. He'll do the right thing. So, you know, I don't know what, who the second one, we've got a lot of appraisals here and people that do appraisals here in Perry. Well, you know, we could do that.
We cannot. There would be somebody you could find. There, there's no appraisers here.
Appraisers, appraisers.
Typically, we, we use.
They're not commercial.
But as Ms. Ball said, it's recommended that you get appraisals. It's not an absolute. And as far as sentimental values where that building is concerned, I get it. I went to school there probably as long as anybody in the history of Taylor County. I went there first through sixth grade. So I, I get that part of it. But the bottom line here is, we're sitting on a building there that's been deemed unusable. Help me if I'm correct, Mr. Anderson. And we're spending a minimum of $61,000 a year to keep that building open. That's just insurance. $97,000 a year if you add electricity, water, sewer, garbage and all of the other things that go along with running that. We're not doing away with any programs. We have places for those two programs to go, without question. Bottom line is dollars.
Yes.
It's gonna save our district a bunch of money. And I get, I get.
The expense from one location.
I get the sentimental values, I get that. But the bottom line is, it's about the dollars, saving money.
Yeah, but you're moving one expense from one building to another. You're not, you're still gonna have expense and we talked about.
Very, very little.
We talked about.
Very, very.
It's gonna be a savings.
Yes, very, very little.
Because when you use water, you're gonna have sewer, you're gonna have electric, all those things that you have in that building.
But I would welcome anyone that would like to, to take that building, purchase it and make a historical landmark out of it. I'm very open to that. Somebody would like to purchase it and buy it.
Yeah, like the historical society.
Yes, very much.
So what's the, I mean, we've got discussion here, what's the care? This was to be an action item, but.
I'll, if Deidre's okay, I'll make the motion to go to public hearing.
I'll second that.
I'm not okay for public hearing, but I mean, it's, I guess it would be the consensus of the board.
But I meant with the discussion, you and I had made.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
I just wanna ask one more question. Is that kind of not what today was, for anyone that wanted to come and speak publicly?
I think what I'm hearing is a formal public hearing such as requires notice, 28 day notice and having a public hearing, just like you're doing your policy tonight. I think I'm hearing that from the board. Is that inaccurate?
Right.
I think that's what I understand. The reason being, Reggie, is the Friday was in the paper. Tonight's Tuesday, four or five days' notice. There's not a lot to get into the community. And if we can get it into the community, we might get a whole heck of a lot more good ideas from the community on what to do and what not to do with it. You know, we might get a lot more money out of it. We might get somebody, like you said, that wants to take it.
Take it over, yeah.
I mean, I'm, I, I didn't go to school there. I went to Glassmore's and Glassmore's been gone. So I don't have any dog in the fight, you know what I'm saying? It's, they, they gave that one to the senior, senior citizen people a long time ago. So that's, it's not that. I just want it to be done transparent, clear, fair, no questions. Nobody can't say, well, they, they didn't do this or they didn't do that. That's, that's, that's where I am.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's, to some, it's going to be emotional. I mean, I could tell you, and I've shared this with several, but 67 years ago, I stood on those sidewalks over there entering the first grade. I couldn't speak one sentence. I stuttered. I could not put words together. But every time I ride by that place, and I'm, don't get me wrong, I know times have to change and things have to go on. But every time I ride by and look at that shelter where the buses picked up the kids, I see myself. So there are still memories, attachments, but, don't take me wrong. I'm not saying that just because of that, that we shouldn't do anything about it. But I'm hearing from the board that we just wanna be sure that we cover all of our bases, give the public all the information or the opportunity. Eventually, we will get to the point of making that decision, whether to dispose of it or not. So I'm hearing, Ms. Carlton, that, that you're making a motion that we go to a full, a public hearing. Ms. Mathis, you second that. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? All right, so carry.
Set a date for that tonight?
It'll depend on the notices and all.
So is a part of your motion also to authorize advertisement for public hearing?
Yes.
Is we taking a motion on that?
I'm sorry?
Are we taking a motion on the authorize for public hearing or is that all in one?
I was asking if that was part of the motion.
Okay, well, I just wanna say that I oppose going to public hearing, but, I mean, it's the consensus of the board.
But you voted for the other?
Huh?
You, you.
That's what I'm saying. I didn't know it was gonna be all in one motion. I mean, it's the consensus of the board.
I thought you voted to go to public hearing just now.
I'm in favor of what the board would do, but I just, I don't feel like we have enough information that was being presented to us to present to the public for a public hearing. That's my concern.
I think when you're authorizing it to advertise, the hope would be that that information would come in in the interim. That's kind of what I'm hearing.
Well, I mean, can we put that part of the motion?
You just go ahead and do it in two seconds.
Well, the, the public hearing is more, more to hear from the public. It's not to tell the public, it's to hear from the public. And then from, from there, then we should be able to put together what we need to put together.
Well, the request I'm asking is not for the public. I just feel like we as a board have not been presented with enough information in regards to present this to the public. Well, again, is, the cost analysis is not even thoroughly, really detailed, Lacy. To be honest with you, like I say again, we're just looking at the expense far as a past year. And to me, we, every building in the district has been an expense in the past year. And I understand we occupy more of those buildings than we got occupancy over there. But if this is just the approach we gonna take every time the bill get too high, I don't feel like that's really being strategic when it comes to funding. I mean, I would like us to just have a little more information in regards to what's gonna be the expense that if we're not gonna continue to utilize this building, where we're gonna see a return on our investment far as even with the relocating these programs to another low area, what that potentially make cost. And then also, if we are, if it's gonna be the consensus of the board to move forward with, you know, the public hearing and then a potential, you know, selling this property, getting rid of it, I would like to know what type of revenue we trying to generate for this, especially if we don't pour more than a half a million dollars in the building. Just putting it up for sale is not gonna, again, I don't see how that's gonna fix our issue if we're gonna be limited in that funding. And then if it's not gonna be funding, that can, like I say, be a return on investment based off what we just spent.
Would we, would we not need, at the time that we have the public hearing, would we not need to have an appraisal in to have an idea?
That would be beneficial, I would think, to your discussion, absolutely. And also, at that point, if you're gonna follow up with the resolution, then you would need to have that, I would believe, to set your minimum price.
So, I mean, I'm sure those were things that will come up in a public hearing. So would we need the board to request the appraisal tonight or do we wanna request it?
I believe Ms. Moneyhand had already reached out. I don't know where that stands, but I think.
I have not heard back from Mr. Jim Brent and then Danny got a quote for an appraisal.
So, I mean, if it's the direction of the board that that information all come to you before the anticipated public hearing, I think the information you're requesting, Ms. Donnell, and the information from an appraiser could conceivably come in before that public hearing. If not, then.
So, so the motion and second that's been made and have been voted on is to go to a public hearing.
Right.
Everybody's in favor of that.
And then I just asked if that was going to be authorized for advertisement tonight or if there's, maybe we need to do it as a two-step here.
I'm not in favor of public hearing.
So if they're, if you're not ready to authorize the advertisement, then you don't need to even address that tonight. I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page.
How long will it take to get an appraisal in, do you think, Mr. Anderson?
I don't know the cause because, yeah, somebody that's from Madison is gonna be a lot cheaper. But I hadn't, hadn't made contact with him, but I'm pretty sure he's gonna be way lower than originally. At least I've been told that he was a lot cheaper doing. So I can reach out to him tomorrow. Price he is.
Is that the, the only one or have, do you have another one? Is that the only?
Well, I had another one from Tallahassee, it was $6,000.
That's what I was, yeah, $6,000.
That's.
Jim Brent, so he might be, he'd probably be comparable to the guy in Madison, I would.
Well, that one part, Dan got the $6,000.
That's what he said.
That was Tallahassee.
Again, my concern is the cost, my thing is, you guys got concerned for cost, but at the end of the day.
You heard what Angela said, about $500,000, they recommend one. If it's over a million, they recommend two.
Or the statute doesn't require any. And I thought that the other way does not require any.
Well, the statute might not require any, but if it's the discretion in the interest of the board, then we are tasked with that responsibility.
Ms. Ball, were you gonna say?
Well, I, I was just gonna say, I didn't mean to muddy the water by trying to clarify the advertising. Doesn't sound like anybody has enough information yet to authorize the advertisement for public hearing. So the intent of the board is that a public hearing be conducted. Maybe when all these pieces of the puzzle come together, everyone will be ready to set the timeline on the advertisement.
Okay.
And again, I'm not in favor of a public hearing unless we could provide the information, so.
Okay, so you would go nay to a public hearing?
You voted to a public hearing as far as the timing.
Just kicking the can down the road.
I'm not kicking the can down the road again. I just feel like if we're gonna be presented with information, we need to be presented with the facts.
Okay. So for us to set the record straight, though, motion's been made and seconded that we go to a public hearing. Now, are you in favor of that or opposed to that?
Well, Angela, when did I vote to be in favor of a public hearing?
Initially, and I think where you're, you're hung up is that you're saying, you're not ready for a public hearing at this point.
No, my concern is I don't think we have enough information to go to public.
You're not opposed to a public hearing.
No, I'm not opposed. I'm not opposed to if we get to that, if we get to that, if we get to that, I'm not opposed to it. But right now, I don't think we're ready for it.
At that point, the majority of the board has said let's have a public hearing. Are you gonna, do you want to oppose that?
Not to that.
Or are you?
She's for that, but she wants to get the information first.
Yeah.
So I think it can be parallel to each other. I think it can all be coming together if we give it enough time for the public hearing, so.
So you're good with the yay vote?
Angela, explain it to me one more time.
All the board is taking action on is the consensus that there should be a public hearing before any final action is taken on the resolution to sell.
Yes, I do agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, I thought that's where we was at.
Okay.
All right, we'll move forward then to item point 9.04. This is two requests, action items. Number one, to appoint two members of the 2025 Value Adjustment Board. One regular member and one designated alternative. All right, Ms. Carlton, volunteers to be the regular member?
I'll be the alternate.
All right, Ms. Agner as the alternate, okay? Any other discussion? Do I have a motion and second that we accept their volunteerism?
Motion.
Second.
All right, Ms. Donnell makes the motion, seconded by Ms. Mathis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carry. Item number two is appointment citizen representative to the Value Adjustment Board.
I do got someone I would like to recommend. Unless there's somebody president.
We gotta have some people.
I do got a recommendation, yeah, I do got a recommendation for Jim Nestle. Jim Nestle.
Have you talked to him?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we know him?
Um, he's a constituent, he lives in a community. N U E S S, I think, Ellie.
All right, we've had one.
Yeah, I could contact him and confirm, but.
Any other discussion?
Did you get a second on that?
Ma'am?
Did you get a second on that?
I second Deidre's motion for Mr. Nestle.
All right, been seconded then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carry. All right, item 12.13, number one, this was originally a consent item, but now is an action item. Ms. Bale, Director of Personnel, is requesting to create two bus driver positions. Each position will be for eight hours, nine months.
Motion to, motion to approve.
All right, Ms. Carlton makes that motion. Ms. Agner seconds it.
Now I have a question. Kiki, oh, can you explain a little bit? We've done this in the past.
Wait a minute, did we just vote on approval?
I guess there's a savings involved here. Can you kind of talk with us a little bit about that?
So Lacy broke it down for everybody. I think you each got a copy of that, she emailed it out Friday. Basically, she went through and did September 13th and how much money we were spending and extra hours each month for these extra runs that we have to do. So if we get these, we're not paying, if we get these, so we're adding six more hours. Each employee's already working five, so that's where it comes down to six hours. At the highest paid is $29.16. So it's costing us $63,000, but now it would only cost us $41,000. That's saving us $22,000. One of the biggest things is we're not paying, what'd you say, overtime and not extra hours? We're not paying benefits or insurance, what'd you say?
We sold those benefits.
What'd you say?
The insurance would be the.
Be up, yeah.
The fine witness.
We're not paying anymore. We were paying on those extra hours we had to pay.
Overtime and a half for the bus.
Extra taxes.
Okay. So now it won't be, it'll just be regular hourly rate.
So can I ask this question? When I asked for the cost analysis, I thought we would get, you know, pretty much what we needed to see the cost difference. But based off your analysis, you put six hours over here, on here, but it requests this for eight hours.
So they already work five, so they're only getting an additional three.
So how do that equate six? Okay, so even with that, the concern is, and I, you know, spoke with you some on this on Friday, Kiki, is back when, you know, Superintendent Glover came to us and said we was gonna go from two to five hours, it came that this would be one of the things that would be getting addressed, these extra runs. But again, here we are, all these years later, and extra runs is still an issue. I know we, at one point, as a district, bought some software that we thought would help improve routes, but I don't even think we utilized that. And so I guess my concern is that we really ain't seeing where we getting rid of these routes and we going from five hours to now eight hours. I'm just really wondering what's, how are we gonna really see that this is what's gonna be addressed? Because we still have everybody over there driving buses at any given time. Like even Wendy as the Transportation Director, it seems like Wendy is on the bus just as much as anybody else. And so as a district and a, again, I'm not seeing where we saving money when it comes to transportation in these. to transportation and these extra routes.
Don't say that we're.
I see what you put on here, but again, we was told, you know, some years ago.
I mean, I wasn't in this position, so I can't address.
Well, we was.
Bus drivers got five hours. I wasn't here.
It was presented that this was going to cover these extra routes, us going from two to five, that it would cover extra routes. And again, we would use those individuals in a different capacity, like helping out in schools, helping with custodial work. And again, we took on paying five hours versus two, but again, it doesn't seem like it's produced no cost savings. So for me, I'm reluctant to see that this is going to produce cost savings.
I guess the question is, are those two hours going to five if those extra three hours that was given back then? Do we know that they're actually in, helping in the school district so that they can run that second run?
The time I remember bus drivers helping in the district was when it was COVID and they were going over there helping clean. They were getting extra hours for doing that. In schools and.
You know, they were supposed to be.
They were originally four hours, so they've only got one hour, and that was a non-instructional negotiation.
Right.
I wasn't, so I don't know how that was set up or addressed. There were a lot of not a people that were in agreement with them going from four to five, but that was my understanding.
Angela, is this something that the, they're non-instructional, has to agree to or whatever?
No, I think the, the district as the employer has some latitude in outlining the hours of work and so forth, so.
Okay, so we have a motion in second that we approve this.
I don't approve it.
Okay, well, we hadn't voted yet.
Okay.
All right, all in favor for this, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right, Ms. Donnell opposes. Okay. Item twelve point fifteen was a consent item, but moved to an action item. Ms. Bell, Director of Personnel is requesting to create a job description, school bus driver, eight-hour position.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Mathis makes that motion. Ms. Carlton seconds it.
Is the only need for the new position is because it's specifying eight hours? Because I'm not seeing why we need a whole new job description. It looks like is what we've had just said, eight hours.
There were four or five extra job responsibilities.
That's what we agreed to in the past.
Okay.
So we added at the bottom, when courses are required to transport students between two schools, we're talking about all the routes that we take from the early education program, from the high school to the primary. Students that have been assigned a shortened day, so those E.S., those I.E.P.s are happening all through the year, and we're constantly asking for extra hours for people to run those routes. Help with office duties in the Transportation Department, perform duties as assigned by the coordinator, and then other duties assigned by the side administrator. So one of the things that we've come across is that we have a three-hour custodial here, and part of her three hours was cleaning at the bus garage. That's now a day or two.
That's, that's kind of the way we did it in the past.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, yeah.
So those extra hours is just going to be them help cleaning?
Of all the things I just read.
Those extra E.S.C. run or.
Building robots.
Get out early, I.E.P.s.
Our B.U.T.C. kids that go from high school to B.U.T.C. back and forth, the kids that go from early education to the primary three days a week, every single period. And the shortened, the short runs because of the I.E.P.s are being written.
Anything else? All right, we have a motion in second that we approve this position. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Nay.
Okay, Ms. Donnell opposes. Okay. Item fifteen point oh one, this, this is for an approval and authorization to advertise for a public hearing, the policy updates.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Carlton. All right, Ms. Agner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carry. This brings us down to items of interest by the superintendent and board and Mr. Superintendent.
I appreciate everybody coming out tonight and speaking on behalf of FFA and Ms. Deming. Appreciate you coming and giving your opinion about our, our school. Just again, it's been a busy, busy summer. Everything that we're doing as administrators and trying to prepare for next year, and as the budget continues to, to fall in our lap, we'll be preparing with what we're going to have, and I can say that I can give you three million reasons why I'm pretty happy today. I'm excited about the direction of our schools, and we're looking forward to a great twenty twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Really don't have a lot more than that. I do want to say again, one last time about this, this rock building, that I'm only interested in trying to help save our district money is the reason behind it, and I just want to say that one more time.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't have anything. I think my administrators, they've been plenty busy this summer. I'm not going to ask them to give us all their positives tonight, because there are many, many, unless some of you want to.
And just text me one. Hey, y'all, I heard.
Ms. Ammon from the elementary school.
Yeah, this is my wheelhouse, the science STEM area. Leslie O'Barry, one of our fifth grade science teachers, was chosen out of eight hundred applicants across the nation, and was chosen to visit the MAGLabs this summer for a week for our grant for teachers. And so she was there last week, and so we're excited when she comes back, she'll press release for us. And she's been doing a lot of learning about scheduling, about just the standards and all of, all things science is great. I'm so excited for her. She said it's the best thing she's.
Right.
Awesome.
Okay.
That's fantastic. I do want to say, I do want to say one other thing. This weekend, Saturday, we have one of our native sons, LeGarrette Blunt's going to be putting on a football camp for kids of all ages, absolutely free, and I can assure you, there's not many people in the world that can walk in that door and say they have three Super Bowl championship rings, and he's one of them. And he's going to be here in town tomorrow, actually. I tried to talk him into being here tonight, but he couldn't quite make it because I did want to recognize LeGarrette. I got to tell one quick story about him. I was coaching him in eighth, in high school. We played, we were playing Madison. Madison went ahead seven-nothing, and we were getting ready to return to kickoff, and I'll never forget this as long as I live, LeGarrette looked at me and said, "Don't worry about it, Coach. I'm running the kickoff pack and tying this thing up." And he did, ninety-seven yards, touchdown. And anyway, we're excited about the camp that he's going to do and giving back to our community Saturday, absolutely free, and I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that to the board.
Thank you. Who won the ballgame?
That was in the days where Madison couldn't come to Perry without getting whipped.
Okay.
All right, and those days are coming back, sir.
Thank you. You have it.
I do not think.
All right, Ms. Donnell.
I do got a couple. Just to piggyback on Reggie said, I remember when we was getting ready for the spring game, one of the, one of Coach Coker players, he was so excited about us playing Jefferson because he remembered a day where Jefferson couldn't come to Taylor County. So just, just to add on that, but I first want to, again, acknowledge my speakers tonight. Again, it's never easy, so again, thank you guys for coming. Again, with the Santana, thank you for coming and sharing that information with the board. Far as the individuals here from Ag, just to acknowledge those two students and their hard work, and just to see, I think one of those was a senior that graduated, so if he's still affiliated, that's, that's awesome, and just the parent, and I'm sure he's putting in work as a volunteer, so just to, again, express concern. I remember when I was early on the board and before we had Ag, we would host state competitions here, and there was chapters from everywhere but Taylor County. And then back then, you know, we was still the pine tree capital state. We were flourishing when it comes to forestry and economy we had here. So to see that we was able to envision that program and bring it on, so I'm hopeful and I'm prayerful that the superintendent will come up with a plan of action. I'm going to, again, say appropriations because I seen what I think was Citrus County shared, how all but one of their appropriation requests got approved. So I think, you know, when we see different things like this coming, I think that's a good way to build a list, and the superintendent kind of prioritize how he would like to address some of these issues. I do feel like with us having the universities that we have within the reach of our students and the opportunities that it present regarding, regarding Ag, with the University of Florida, FAMU, even I think is some right here in Albany or somewhere, there's an Ag school, NFC just add a two-year Ag program. So just the work that we put in the Ag, it would be great to see it keep booming, because again, that's just another activity that our kids can get involved in, and another vehicle we had to offer to our community in regards to the different programs we offer here. So I'm prayerful that the superintendent would come up with a way to address that concern. I do want to acknowledge the superintendent's hard work in regards to, just again, coming in and hitting the ground running, being tasked with what's, what's on his plate, and how he prioritized going to Tallahassee. As a board member, I don't take that lightly, because again, that showed dedication off the back to what, you know, what you wanted to offer our districts and our schools and our communities. So I applaud you for that, but I more so applaud the Lord giving you the favor that you had when you went to Tallahassee. And I just pray that as we get this funding, that we use it to the best of our abilities, and where it looks like we just hit the jackpot, I pray that, you know, our community's understanding of what we still have tasked ahead of us in regards to the financial responsibility we have right now. So, yeah, it was a big success, and I think we need to give it time to celebrate it, but also still know that, like Bonnie kind of said, we still might be kicking the can down the road, but we want to acknowledge where we at. So again, just to acknowledge the support that you received from Tallahassee in regards to Senator Simon, Representative Choe, and all the other people that helped you navigate that path and got you to Tallahassee to go before that. We want to acknowledge their support and their help, and just all the help we had along the way from our representatives to help receive this funding that we received. So congratulations, and to thank you to those individuals. I did have two quick questions. I know we approved tonight for extra funds for the board meetings, but I just want to ask Ron, I noticed we kind of behind with some of those updates. Do we, is there a reason for that?
It's been a little short on time.
Oh, okay. I, I was just wondering, because the June meetings have not been posted yet, so I was just trying to wonder if there was something going on with that.
I've heard all that.
It's no issue. I was just wondering if it was just something going on, because I know there's been a lot of technology things lately. But with the payroll calendars that we approved tonight, are these the same that we approved the last meeting, or is this something?
It's Thursday.
Okay.
Nine-month people usually do not work when there's no kids.
Okay.
Get out two days after ten-month people, so I had to take that, I had to make them work most of the day.
Okay. And then my other question is, Ms. Pure, you might could help with this question, because I asked Angela, and she said she was, she wasn't aware there's been any changes, but far as with the supplementals, because I know we had some appointments come over tonight far as some of the summer stuff, and I guess upcoming fall sports, are we still requiring that the coaches have that athletic certificate? Okay, so where are we at with making sure they're up to date with those?
Before they, you know, they have to go also for, they do not have that athletic certificate. Why would have to have an E.S.O. waiting, or anything? Some of them working.
Well, you might want to check your list, but moving on, another concern that I wanted to bring up, and again, I noticed we posted new start times. So wasn't anything on the last agenda? We didn't have anything on this agenda. I don't really have a concern with the time, because again, this is coming from administration there in the schools. But I do have a concern being that we know there was a school start time mandate that was in play. It doesn't take effect until twenty twenty-six, but what the governor put in this session was an opportunity for the districts to be given some leniency. So I guess my concern was with school start times being posted before it came to the board, I do feel like we missed the opportunity for one of the concessions that's been put in far as us engaging the public and having public knowledge and meetings. So again, I understand the work you guys doing, but I still, I'm going to advocate for me as a board member and the rest of us that, you know, I like to stay in my lane, so I do want to be able to do what, you know, what's my responsibility. So school start times is a function of the board. I understand it's operations job to implement, but it would have been nice for us to have that prior to it getting announced to the public. So that's my concern with that. And then tonight with the recommendations, far as the administrators, congratulations. I am, you know, ecstatic for these individuals, but I do share a concern in regards to just where we at as a district in regards to building a pipeline for administration. Since I've been on the board, it just seems like there's a certain group of individuals that is getting opportunities when it comes to ed leadership and administrative positions. So I am concerned what type of pipeline or what type of plan we have in place, because I know there's numbers of individuals in this district that have worked on ed leadership or aspire to be out of the classroom. And so where I know administrators have concerns and interest in employees and you're coming up with different ways, I still just seem like, it seemed like the same group is getting opportunities, but yet we, we're not seeing changes in regards to district grades or school grades. So I'm just expressing concern as to what we're doing to offer opportunity across the board and not just the same group of people. This past year, we made improvement when it came to football and look at the outcome with that. So again, I'm just going to advocate that as we, I do, I am a big proponent of institutional knowledge and experience, but again, if, if we're not really getting a real return on investment, I am concerned about keep going in the same direction when there's an opportunity for growth and change. So that's all I have in regards to my board comments.
Okay, you done?
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Agner.
I want to thank Reggie, like Deidre said, for doing all the hard work on the front end of this three million dollars, but it's called Hurricane Relief Fund, and I want the public to be aware of that. It's not spin like you want to. It's hurricane relief, and.
It's not real current.
Thank God we got it. I want to thank Governor DeSantis for not vetoing that line, and Choe, and Simon, and all of the ones that were involved. These men have stuff coming at them left and right, and the fact that all of them have been with feet on the ground in Taylor County shortly after all these hurricanes, it, it spoke volume that they didn't forget us. They said they wouldn't, and they didn't. And, you know, it takes a lot of gumption to go, you know, somebody told me, when you get on the board, you're going to learn how to beg, and it does, you put yourself in a humble position when you go to these people that are in control of your money, of the taxpayers' money. And. of the taxpayers' money, and Reggie did a awesome job with that, and I just want to thank him for that. Um as far as our district goes, I'm hearing so many good things about this next year, there's so many kids coming back, I see a couple of teachers have come back, um so I feel like that we're building a program here that is going, it's it's, it reminds me, and I know I'm old, but it reminds me of the way things used to be, and there there's a lot of the disciplines come back, a lot of areas, there's a lot of kids that are coming back that want to be part of this program that left here for whatever reason, but we're just thankful that y'all are creating the atmosphere that wants them to come back, and that's that is, you know, if if that's the whole ticket, if the atmosphere has to be there for them to want to come back, and it takes all of us, but especially the boots on the ground, just thank y'all all so much.
Thank you, ma'am, Ms. Mathis?
Yes, congratulations Courtney. You're welcome, and to Kelly, that's wonderful news, looking forward to it very much. Also, and Laura, Laura was like, weren't you last meeting?
Yeah. She was.
But I texted her.
Yeah, I know.
This is your first time here, congratulations.
Yeah, this is her first meeting.
I know it's going, I know it's going to go well, I'm very excited to see what y'all do, so a lot of changes, but a lot of good changes, you know, I feel like. Um a lot of people with really big hearts for our district up there, and it is going to be wonderful. The um Santana, thank you, honey, very much for speaking, I I want to, I really hope that the public hearing brings more voices out, because I would love to hear everyone's opinion about it. Honestly, in my mind right now, I'm not one way or the other, it's people like you that are going to help us decide what we need to do, and so as we listen to things and as we get appraisals and information, and those are those are the things that are going to help us decide, so thank you. Um also, uh LaGarrett's camp is going to be a lot of fun, I did meet him one time, got my picture taken with him, I turned into a complete fangirl, so I'm hoping I don't make that terrible boo-boo again, remember words and stuff like that, next time I get a chance to meet him, but yeah, I that's a great opportunity for our kids, and I hope a lot of them take advantage. I certainly have shared it and spread the word, done the best that I could in my neck of the woods. Um do we need an executive session, Angela, anything for us tonight? Uh I hope everyone has a wonderful Fourth of July, if you, of course, I see Shelby out there, we're like, we we have some funds frozen, in case anybody doesn't know, that has really sent us all into a tailspin today, and I know myself, Brenda, we've we've been emailing our 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 federal representatives, and we have been doing everything that we can do to try to to plead our case to them to get some funds released, and it's been a very rough day, but um hopefully by our next meeting, it'll be resolved, I feel like it will be. With the, okay, yep. A hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars right now frozen in adult education money and um for our GD program, and it is frozen as of today, so. Yeah. Yeah. Go ahead, Kiki.
No, I thought we was going to table and workshop it. Yeah, I thought that's what direction we gave, that's what was in the minutes.
We wanted someone to be able to go up.
Yeah, but I thought we was going to schedule it for a workshop.
If we tried to discuss it now, Danielle.
No, it's not.
Chairman here.
Let's get it on the next agenda.
Can we get it on the agenda for the next meeting, Jill, will you be able to come? Okay, thank you. I wish everybody a very happy Fourth of July, um if you are on Facebook and you have, you feel led to or you're able to, we have a bunch of our teachers who have wish lists for Amazon posted, and it it's a always a good thing if you can help them out with their classrooms, they spend a fortune every year, uh I mean, I would not be a bit surprised if they don't spend just four hundred dollars on candy and little incentive gifts for kids. I know, you know, having the teachers in my life, that's about what they spend, so anything we can do to help them. See y'all next two weeks.
All right, you finished?
Reggie wanted to say something else before I go.
Yeah, real quick, um just to kind of address Ms. Dunell's thoughts about our administrative pool, and congratulations to Courtney and Kelly, and we already told Laura, I think they're going to be very good for our school district, but we are building an administrative pool of our local people here, and I feel that's important, because I feel like those people are invested in our community and in our schools, and that's one of my goals as superintendent, is to build an academic, I mean, um administrative pool here locally of people that are vested in our community, so that we can continue to build this strong team that we have built through collaboration, teamwork, meetings, to make sure we're all on the same page, having the same goals and moving in the same direction, that is very important to me as superintendent, and that's that's one of the goals we have as a district, so I'm excited, and that's one of the reasons is because I feel like we've we've got a great team, and it's because of the the pool that we're trying to put together and get more people involved in administration. We've got to make sure we get the right ones, we've got some in our district who are going to be fantastic administrators, they just got to continue to work, get experience and learn, and they will be ready to to step in one day, so we're excited about that.
Don't they have to go through a certain amount of um training?
Yes, and ed leadership and get that past the feeley and all those good things that that go with it, but we've got some very good intelligent people in our district that are working toward that to to step in when some of them decide to to go on and enjoy retirement, so.
Well, that's good to hear.
Ms. Carlton?
Okay, I'm going to be repetitive on some things, but I do want to thank Reggie on persistence with the uh three million, when I'd be calling him every other day, saying it's not, you know, we've got some roadblocks, we got roadblocks, and we'd go back and make sure that those roadblocks were not in the way, but uh thanks to the governor, to uh Representative Shoef and to Senator Simon, but also to, there was a lot of other lobbyists, not even lobbyists for us, that was out there working and um trying to follow through on it, so uh thanks for the for all that hard work, and like you say, it's going to be a, it's non-recurring, but uh we're thankful that we got that, but we do, Jeannie, and I want to reiterate that appropriations are very important, we need to be looking uh, and if you just go down that list of ones that were approved.
Yeah.
Some of the things that were asked for, you know, we would be remiss if we didn't look at that also.
And I did, I don't mean to cut on you, but I did see on there, like at the very top, where you did see that there was appropriations that came down that said in second year, in third year. So again, just, I know initially you, your goal was three years, or that's what you was told, so I don't know if it's something we just need to re-approach, but when I did see that, it let me know that it could happen, um so that's why I'm like, we really need to make sure we put some action behind appropriations.
Give them a just a little bit of breathing and start working again.
Yeah.
Thanks for the speakers that came in, uh Santana and Mr. Gregory tonight, uh sharing your concerns, appreciate that. Um the um all the new administrators, I'm just saying all congratulations, I know that y'all are all excited and just can't wait to get started for first day back with the students, and that'll be like tomorrow, so uh congratulations again. Um our next meeting now is in three weeks, is that not correct?
Twenty-second.
The twenty-second, now is that the first budget? I would love to, well, we have some information before then, because the board hasn't had any input in making that budget really, and the board really.
We actually have it ready without a week.
Listen, don't forget about, we're going to feed the Bulldogs on the seventeenth. No. What I was saying is that, you know, we as a board have has not, we've not had any input.
No.
So, you know, I don't know how we can rectify that, but I mean, there could be some recommendations for changes.
Yeah, and I'm told that Tallahassee has released budget and potential F T E numbers, because I know we was waiting for the F T E. Um I know Pam Pam did, you know, the survey from February, and that's pretty much what the state worked with, so um I'm just wondering whether we have some information by um the twenty-second in regards to where we at with F T E. Well. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I heard that the, you know, there's been some information, but not where you can release it, so.
Okay, well, Ms. Carlton, you're finished, I just want to close out by saying that we appreciate everybody coming, their input this evening from those who came to address the board as citizens, we thank you, appreciate that. Um and hopefully, as we move forward, that we can get through some of these issues that we, it seems like we keep kicking down the road, but uh it we will get there, and they're very important issues, and so um. We just let them go before we can turn around, but thank y'all for coming, and do I have a motion and second, Ms. Carlton?
Second.
Ms. Agner seconds it, all in favor for the adjournment of this meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? This meeting's adjourned.